You're just like hearing.
He is, yeah.
Oh, yeah, the state of the city.
Ready? Don't need your order.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
All right. Minutes of the previous meeting. Motion to approve. Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the next. I must put the checking mic on and say that. Uh, we have any additions or corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries. Agenda, anything to add?
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries. Okay. Oh. Good afternoon, good evening, Vegas.
Evening. Uh, given that you showed us a proposal for better technologies, it is for the one of the second last stage of our scanning project for mortgages. So we put it into our computer system. The cost is twenty-five hundred dollars. I'm just looking to see if we approve that cost.
Approve, do approve.
Sorry. We have a motion and a second to approve the scanning projects. Uh, the cost, would you say twenty-five hundred?
Twenty-five hundred.
Okay, any discussion? Very done, uh, I guess we're out paying for it, so all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, do you have any sense of when we're completely done with the project?
What's your definition of complete?
Well, I know that as new records get added, they'll have to continually be scanned in, but say, relatively current.
This part of it is that better technologies now has the two files, the images, probably US imaging. So they'll, they will actually upload it on a sample server to make sure that nothing passes with what is currently in our system. And then once that's done, and then they will upload actually to our server, put it in there. Um, I would say within the next four to six weeks, that would be done. But nothing is indexed, or indexed, if it's, nothing is indexed, that's going to take years to index. I would say at a rough estimate, probably ten to fifteen years to get everything indexed. That means that the mortgages, the deeds, uh, anything that is in right now, we have indexing from nineteen seventy-nine up to current. As we're going through it, we're working on trying to index more, but it's according to what our workload is, they pay.
Sure.
As far as complete, I can't give you a time for it. It takes years to get everything indexed.
All right.
This would be the last scanning project once this is completed. We wouldn't have to scan any other projects, this is the biggest project.
And it's just going through individual files, basically, and indexing them correctly?
Came in and took pictures of every single document in the center. And then they, they arranged them in your system and adjusted them, made them look good in their actual computer system. And that's taken since December. Got the first sample that I went through in August and spot checked, and that took nine months. It's a little bit faster part than that.
And we got, what, a hundred and thirty years worth of documents to index, so fifteen years is too bad.
It would, it would take a lot.
That's a busy work. All right, very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, man. Chris? Good evening.
Good evening. Uh, mine's pretty simple. Uh, brought to you guys back in January, uh, tier-two funding. We were going, you talked about, uh, sheriff asked if he could buy masks with tier-two funding? And it was granted, or we voted to go, yes. Uh, so I went to order those, and then I did some research, and went to order them due to COVID. No one was shipping, no one was processing them. They were kind of holding back. So I got an email stating that they were gonna, that they were good to take orders, so I just wanted to just, uh, get approval to purchase masks, it's going to be about twenty-two hundred dollars.
Motion to approve. Second. We have a motion and a second to, uh, go buy masks with sheriff's department. You said that's, that's grant funding then, that tier-two funding?
It's tier-two funding, not, not just the funding they get for, uh,
Oh, it's, but it's just, yeah, it's, it's, okay. Okay, further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries. Very good, thank you. We've got Alan up next, but Alan isn't here. So... We will skip down to Kevin.
All right.
Unless I'm not seeing Alan behind a pole someplace, which is possible. Yeah. Go ahead, Kevin. He just walked in. Well, we'll let Alan go first then, since he just walked in. You're up.
All right. Well, um, the reason I'm here is to, uh, ask to use the memorial building for COVID testing. Uh, it's gonna be in October, it's gonna get cold, we're not gonna any longer be able to do it outside. We need our building big enough where we can wind the people up and send them through and get them tested. So that's, that's why I'm here.
Thoughts?
Any questions?
Do you have a sense for what your re-sterilization protocol will be?
My what?
Like, so sterilization after, after? Okay, you've got a hundred, I think, of people that come through there.
None whatsoever. I would have, we would do it ourselves, we'd have, uh, we'd have a professional.
Come in and?
Somebody do it.
Okay, so it would just be like, you do that all thing and who knows where, what's floating around in there afterwards?
Yeah, yeah, we would call like service master and, you know, and, uh, that's what we would do. We don't have the personnel to do it ourselves, so, um, yeah, or the time.
You're gonna clean it before you use it?
No, no. No reason to.
No, just have to be done.
We would require people to come with masks, uh, we would line them up six feet apart, motion two, test them, they go out the other door. Um, that's it.
Yeah, I guess my, my hesitation was, you know, were we gonna expect building maintenance to clean it, which I don't think was acceptable. Would have been a solution then.
Nope, we would, uh, we would hire somebody to clean it.
Okay.
It will just be an ongoing, uh, second.
Second discussion, that's much.
We're, we're, this is what the, on Thursdays, this is where the state is, we started out on Tuesday with the tribal Monday days, and we moved it to Thursday. Um, they want the testing spread out because the lab can't handle it all at once. They're pushing us for more testing, not less. So, uh, for the foreseeable future, that's what I've been told. Uh, I don't know how long they'll want to go forward with this, uh, we'll see. I guess we're in the middle of flu shots also. Uh, most of those are being done in private businesses, but they don't want the public coming in. Uh, the public have been coming up to our office for flu shots. Um, so we will continue with that. Um, and, uh, I, we're going to probably try and do some mass flu shot, uh, clinics also. Um, so, yeah, we're, they're keeping us off, I'm sure.
Who is they, the state?
The state.
All right. They're gonna have you test every week, every month, or what?
We, we test every week usually, yeah, on Thursdays, yeah.
You're set up to do, what, three, four hundred, or what?
We, we have three hundred, three hundred tests available for us each week. Uh, we've only, the highest we've gotten is probably a hundred and ninety-four, except for the very first one, we did two hundred. Um, the people, a lot of people have lost interest in being tested, um, unless they have to be. Uh, close contacts and people like that, um, they, they have to be tested. Um, and there's still some people that want to know. And employers want their people tested. A lot of college kids, uh, need to be tested to get back into class. The ones that have to be tested are the ones that are coming for the most part right now. Um, you know, it's just the, the public has, has, uh, gotten a little, a little tired of, of it all.
What's your positive rate then?
It's not very high. It's not very high. It's, uh, ours has been running between one and two percent, um, so it's not very high. Um, now, if we get into a, a different population, like the college, it jumped up because, uh, they like to get together. You get one positive in a room, a small room of a bunch of people, it spreads real fast. It depends on who you're testing. If you're testing close contacts, our, our rate goes up to between like three and five percent. But, um, you know, it's, right now, our hotspot is, is near Oxford. Um, they're, uh, they've got like sixty, I think it's sixty-five out of ten thousand. Uh, most of them have been from the nursing home, and, like, not the, the patients, but the, the employees. And they're people that they get around with, and it's, for a small county, they're, it's spreading pretty fast, but, so.
They have a big nursing home.
Yes, but they've got Benson County with one of the highest trics in the state right there also. Um, they, uh, we tried to get their, uh, their county commission there to cancel their, their, uh, their threshold, um, coming up here, um, and they, they wouldn't go for it, so, um, and, uh, but with that rate, we, public health, we had to try, and so, uh, that's where we're at there. Um, and the Pierce County's probably been the clientest for us in, in our health unit. Um, but we, we control testing all the way to Canadian border, we provide test kits and, and, and support for all seven counties. Uh, R Ford and Rolet County and Kevlar. Any other questions?
Would, would there be, uh, state or federal funding for renting a vacant business? Vacant building that doesn't have?
It's possible, um, it's possible. Uh, and, and I have to get that okay, like the powers that be. Um, we, we've been thinking in places, uh, this is one of them because it's large and it's easily accessible. Um, and, uh, you know, it, it, there's not that many large open buildings. Our main hot site is the high school, we can't be there to get high school, okay? Our backup is the memorial building in all the plants, so that was our first one. We're, we're looking at other places, we'll see how that goes.
Well, I, I know of a couple of, uh, large vacant commercial buildings in town. Uh, whether or not they would be willing to, um, rent that out for a, a duration, I'm not sure. One of the things, concerns that we would certainly have would be election setup and how we need to get all that arranged and, and, uh, you know, if you're having weekly tests in there, it isn't, isn't gonna allow candidate or staff to, to get.
Right, well, if, if it's during the, you know, if they, if they move up, we, if they move up.
But it's not only election, it's the weddings that are scheduled, it's the school that has stuff scheduled, it's,
Sure, yeah.
Like, it's, it's, the school's not allowing anybody to use their facilities, so now everybody's calling us.
Yeah. So are, are we having volleyball practices and, uh, different things like that, and they're on a daily basis?
That daily?
Yeah, what time does the testing usually run? What, what time does the testing usually run?
Well, so far, we've been running at nine to eleven in the morning. Um, you know, we run it, uh, on Saturday, we run it on, on, in the evening to try and get, you know, more people involved. Um, so the, our best time seems to be nine to eleven, which kind of surprised me. I thought the weekend would be, but it's summertime, I can understand nobody wanting to come to testing on Saturday, at when it's nice outside. Uh, the people that came were the ones that had to, the college kids and, and so forth, so.
On what day were you thinking? Was that, what day were you thinking?
Yeah, Thursday, Thursday during the week.
Chris, I'm sure you all know what buildings are thinking about in town. Do you know, has there been any communication, um, with our planning of all those? No?
I've tried to contact the Kmart owner, he wants nothing to do with this. And that was even just using their parking lot.
Right.
Um, he was, he was afraid of the, of the liability.
Sure.
Um, so, which was little or nothing, but that's the way, that's his concern.
Right, yeah.
Uh, and, uh, so, that put us in the, in the Leavers parking lot. Um, and we, they've been very gracious with, um, and, uh, before that, we were out to college.
Is there any, anybody other than county model shop occupying that, uh, south half of, of Leavers?
No, but it is, uh, I've been in, it's kind of a disaster.
Sure.
Yeah, uh, they got stuff, uh, and very dirty, but, um, that's a possibility that we can sit down with them and, but that takes time. And, and, uh, and, uh, some, some rearranging type stuff.
How many more times are you gonna do it outside?
What's that?
How many more weeks are you gonna do outside?
Doing both, uh, this, uh, this Thursday and the twenty-fourth of September.
Okay.
Um, we're gonna try and do them both outside. It'd be a little chilly today, it's going on the twenty-fourth, but.
You better check the service master and see how long he's gonna take to clean up that memorial building.
Okay.
You know, if you're done at eleven or eleven-thirty or noon, or whatever, see if they can have it cleaned up by three or four o'clock.
Okay.
And schedule them, make sure they're there to do it.
Well, sure, sure.
So I don't hinder any practices that have to come in at four o'clock and volleyball or anything that you've already committed to the school for.
I can sure find out. We'll probably be using the service master after the election also, right Candy?
Yeah. I didn't even think that part.
It'd be a good idea.
You know, I've worked with them before, they've done a really good job, at that time, I don't know, you know.
The state funds all this anyway, right?
Yeah, the state, the state, it's several months.
Money's coming down from the state.
Yep, yep, yep.
The state gets, makes a call, right, and fun, yeah.
Yeah, they, uh, they provided the COVID funds to us, yep, yep.
Well, let's make sure that they can get in there immediately and they're scheduled to be there.
Right, oh, yeah.
They gotta be done by three or four o'clock.
Yeah.
Yeah, what kind, how, how long is it gonna take them to get it done?
Yeah, that's what I gotta find out. I'll, I'll go in the back room and see what, see what they say. I have no idea how long it would take.
You might have to keep doing it outside, but we have them lined up to clean that place up after they're done.
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll lay it up for them, see what they say, okay? Um, that's all I can do, and we'll, we'll check back with you, yeah.
Okay, further questions, discussion? We got a motion and a second to allow the usage of the building for testing, say?
With, with, with conditions.
With conditions, yes, explaining and everything else.
Oh, yeah, I'll, I'll amend my motion to say I'll follow the condition at the note for, you know, verifiable fact that service master can have it ended up after every testing session.
Well, and, um, are they, are the people that we've already, you know, reserved the building for comfortable with having the COVID in there or having potential for?
Make sure they're aware of it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think they'll be fine.
I think they'll be fine too, you know.
Well, maybe as a community, you're a chance to request it too, I mean, so.
Right.
Through the sterilization.
You're ready to get in? Not really.
I know that, I know there's gonna be issues. I know that there's gonna be people, building-wise, that are gonna have issues, so. I, I mean, there's, there's, there's a lot of things sitting on those calendars right now.
Sure.
There's a, there's a lot of things sitting on the calendar right now.
Oh, sure, sure, you know, I didn't, that's why I'm asking, you know.
Why don't we, uh, consider the search and rescue building, how's that, Kevin?
Yeah, at least there's not a lot of people going in and out of there.
It'd be a good place.
I didn't know we had that outdoors there.
There, yeah, I had no idea.
I think any place we can make work that's reasonable, aside from me.
That doesn't have people coming and going on a consistent basis.
Let's consider that. That's not like easy to do, Robert.
You know where that's at? You know, I thought it, I thought it, um, I don't know, town chap, right? My, right, they're behind you, you're in there.
They're gonna have parking, right, to the west?
Oh, I actually went up.
I can, uh, I can go out and meet, and he can show it to me and, and see, uh-uh. Finally looked at it, and I didn't, I thought it was all full of stuff. It isn't.
It can be rearranged, you know, plenty of dead space.
Yeah, if you had two of those days, would be plenty, right?
Oh, yeah.
It's pretty large. Well, it could, okay, it could, it can hurt.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think we should probably look at that.
Well, we're gonna have another meeting where you're gonna have an inside meeting, am I right?
Uh, let's see, uh, I don't have more calendars, but the first Thursday, you'd have it on the first Tuesday, so this would be the first Thursday.
I don't know.
Like, I'm, I'll, I'll look at this and, and.
I think you better look at the search and rescue.
Okay.
Relation to memorial, really.
The reason we brought it, it's in, it's in all the plans, it could be used for this kind of thing. So that's why I came up.
How many different people frequent the search and rescue every week, Kevin? Fifteen, twenty people, maybe?
Two. There's somebody that lives down there and exercises in the morning, a couple of nights a week, but other than that, that's it. I mean, unless there's an incident out on the lake or something.
I can't see what are we using for that, have all those people in there, they have to be pulled out, I, I could be mad. But, uh, we'll look at it, we'll look at it, see what the possibilities are.
I'll make sure that search and rescue people are there when we're looking.
Good.
Yeah, we're gonna talk to them too, make sure they're, obviously it's coming to build at the same time. Yeah, we gotta make sure they're comfortable with it too, obviously.
Keep, keep the sheriff informed. You know, does it have two big doors, or is it walk-in doors?
Two walk-in doors.
It's got a walk-in, ten big doors.
Oh, it's got big doors too, but then it got two walk-in doors.
Really? If they have two big doors, we can drive in, see, then there's no reason to, uh, to, to disinfect any of their.
Yeah, it's a trap.
Yeah, it would be tough to get it turned.
Okay.
Wrong one, sorry.
Oh, well, that's fair of you.
You need like all the car wash, really?
You do the car wash, yeah.
What's that?
You do the car wash, yeah.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
But could you do, like, the same thing like you do car seat checkups?
And, you mean, um, uh, at the, uh, we have done lots, um, flu, flu shots at, at the Ford garage. Um, the, uh, those all have to be after hours, though. They're doing business during the day.
Right.
And he's always been very gracious to let us do that. Um, so it's, uh, it's all the stuff you gotta do to get ready, and it's gotta be in the evening. And, uh, our staff is running out of gas, uh, they're going weekends and, and all day and, uh, with contact tracing and testing and. If I can, if I can help it, I'm not gonna put them late, you know, in the evening after hours, unless we have to. Um, it's, uh, we only have so many staff and they're, they're wearing pretty thin, so. Well, Kevin?
Search and rescue, I'm just placing you on. Okay. So how do we wanna, how do we wanna deal with this then? We got a motion right now.
Well, I mean, so you said the next two Thursdays, so this Thursday and next Thursday, basically. We're, we're out of Leavers, uh, both, both terms. Right, so then our next meeting would be Tuesday after the first Thursday. Right, so you, you wouldn't have, we would have, without the meeting, before you'd be testing again? Right, so, so then I retract my motion, and if we need to, under whatever occurrence, have to have like an emergency, figure out what to do, then we'll do it then.
That's all, uh, and I can keep you informed, um, you know, uh, of what's going on, what we see, uh, you know, and our other possibilities. Um, uh, we can, we can talk to, um, the Leavers, see what they have to say, um, and, and go from there.
Okay, are we okay then, Kevin?
Yeah.
Maybe you can check in?
Yeah, I'm in here with that.
Okay. Very well, well, let you know what to get after, figure it out, come back to us.
We got it.
Thanks, appreciate it.
Thanks.
Yeah, we've only got five minutes. What can we do in five minutes? You're gonna take a lot of your five minutes, Kevin. Okay, we'll skip down then to, uh, we're on a new business then, real quick. Let's, uh, approve the LEC bill.
Motion to approve.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the bill for the LEC, further discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Bolson?
Aye.
Lightbon?
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, NDACO conference virtual. Is that, I mean, obviously there's a virtual conference, but is there something we have to do?
Um, I need to know if there's any interest from any of the commissioners, um, to do the, the NDACO conference, that's usually held over in Bismarck.
Can you sign it up for us?
Uh, yeah.
So you, you register that you can pick and choose what sessions you wanna go to and stuff like that, or?
If you get two commissioners and two elected officials to sign up, then they're just, they're doing a flat key. And then if you get two commissioners and two elected officials to sign up, or they, it, the key.
Actually, they got to attend the last session.
I know, we do have like two or three different emails at the last five minutes of the day, and then it, it's, we don't, but it would be like a five-hundred-dollar flat key.
Right, people will attend the last session.
Otherwise, if you don't wanna do that, then if you wanna do the ILG classes that they have, it would be thirty-five dollars per class. So.
Okay, I guess, is anybody interested in signing up as a question?
Well, I had planned on signing up and attending wherever I could, but, um, hey, you know, I'm planning on being down in Bismarck anyway, so, you know, regardless of where it's at, I would like to attend. You know, usually those are very worthwhile sessions. Um, they do have a plethora of information that is beneficial, so I would, would like to attend. So you can put my name on the registration.
Yep.
So it, it is virtual, is it?
Yes.
Entirely?
Yep.
So you can sign me up, that's fine. We have to attend live, or will it be like recorded, and then we can watch it later in the evening or something like that?
You can watch live, or you can watch later on.
Okay, you can sign me up too, because I'll try to get some of it, but I mean, if I'm a whole line, I won't be working.
Was there also something about, uh, if you had so many of them, um, pay the registration, then you, you could have, you know, your entire commission attend or all your elected officials, they'd do it regardless of whether they?
Yeah, it gets unlimited on the num, on the number of people.
So I can get all the fee on it if you want.
Yeah. Where it's actually pretty saving money.
Yeah.
Yeah, because Bev mentioned that she was interested. Lisa?
Yep, yeah, I know, we, I have an association with you.
Yeah.
My association, yeah. Yes, right.
Yeah. Mine's Thursday, so.
It sounds like we got enough people then, so anybody that wants to over the top can do it for nothing, so that's.
Okay. And we'll reach out to the others tomorrow and see who.
Six feet apart.
Six feet apart, watch. All right, I think we got one more minute, so let's go down to letter and transfer.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the letter of transfer, further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries. Out of state travel for the sheriff's department.
Move to approve.
Good.
Oh, yeah.
Motion, second.
Okay.
Okay, further discussion? All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. You really want some more? Motion carries. Homestead credits?
Motion to approve.
Second. Okay, we have motion second to approve the homestead credits, further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries. Okay. Want to fast forward?
No.
Or do we regret the rolls?
I got the taste of listening.
All right, beginning at six o'clock. Uh, we will open the 2021 budget hearing, final budget hearing for the 2021 budget. Um. Just a quick overview of the budget, uh. Presented on our desks here, but for anybody that doesn't have a copy out there, uh, this year, right now, the preliminary budget that, uh. As it stands, that we would approve at the first meeting of October. Stands at ninety point eight one mils levied from the county perspective, uh, down from ninety three point six nine last year. So bills are down, but our percentage of increase in terms of cost is actually up slightly, three point eight one percent because of the increase in the mill value. So our total overall budget is ten million, eight hundred and sixty seven thousand, four ninety four and ninety cents. And that partially has federal funds in it as well as county funds, state funds, everything else that goes into the budget. But our actual local assessment of that ten point eight six seven million is five point five six million. So about fifty percent of our budget is comes from, uh, our local property tax and the other fifty percent comes from state and federal revenue sources. Um. I don't know what else I can say, other than, uh, in order to get back to zero, zero sum where we have no increase in the budget from last year, uh, from our current year's budget, we would have to decrease. Two hundred and thirty nine thousand, three hundred and thirty one dollars. If we wanted to hold even, we would have to find around two hundred and forty thousand dollars with the savings. Uh, with that, I guess any comments or questions on the 2021 budget? What concerns, I guess, just?
I can take off fourteen thousand, five hundred for food costs.
There you go. Past the half, right?
Yeah, yeah.
The only thing I was.
Budgeting the price.
Anybody can chime in, obviously, since this is a budget hearing. The only thing I would, I was going to ask a question of, I was hoping the sheriff was gonna be, I could ask him the question as well, but we are getting those CARES Act dollars back. And we're looking at about what? We had two hundred and sixty seven thousand plus the next two months, so we'll probably come in at. Five or three fifty, excuse me, three hundred and fifty thousand, give or take. So what would we like to do with those dollars? Would we like to pass them back to savings with the sheriff's department? Do they have certain things they need to buy? That we could offset costs or anything like that, even this year? You know, I just, you know, what are we going to do with those additional dollars essentially is, you know, instead of sitting on them, the whole concept is to kind of give everybody a break and then so if we could pass them back, I think that would be a beneficial use of the dollars. After we use them for law enforcement uses. And that would, you know, we wouldn't have to pass everything back, but it would get us down, um, hold even zero. You know, we can take two forty of it, hold ourselves even, and then we can keep the rest for additional spending next year or something like that. Essentially, it's gonna offset the fact that we're increasing the sheriff's department's budget since we're adding off. Which, you know, it's one-time spending, which is, I don't like offsetting dollars with it, but otherwise it's just gonna sit in the fund anyway. Yeah, it's just gonna sit in the general fund.
I'd like to ask, Kevin, your budget's gonna be all right?
Yeah, yes. This year. Next year is our, our even years, we always have our road projects, so this is an odd year, so we gotta work on it. Next year will be different.
Do we need to bank some for next year or? Too far out or do it?
Repaying, I understand, repay.
Put some money away for your budget for next year?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
You think we should use someone that's CARES money for that?
Um, if you had a better use, I'd use it for that, so I, I, I think it'll be all right. Depending on, on, um. You call it the golden bill.
Pretty darn.
Very good. Now, that, that they're saying we're not gonna get any money from that, we were.
None?
None.
And we were kinda counting on that, so that's gonna be.
I heard a little different than that. But I haven't heard no figures.
What have you heard? There has to be a legislative change in order for us to gain, like. And that would, that legislative change would come after January, so it's.
We'll go into the next millennium.
The pots that, at least the last projection I saw on it was probably a month, but the old plus, I would guess, was the pots before, the pots that built for the, uh, uh. Berry dog bill weren't even gonna fill it.
Right.
So we're, we're running so far behind on dollars right now, so.
At the rate we're at now, the pot in front of us is not gonna fill at the time. But the legislative issues are trying to get, that, there's a four hundred million dollar pot that goes through the state highway. And a couple other things, but mostly goes to the state highway, and they're trying to get that pot through legislative change back behind our pot. If that makes sense at all.
So they want ours to build previous to the state?
Right. And aren't in the way. Thirty million or something like that. Versus a four hundred million dollar pot.
Yeah. I think the three, the three pots were a hundred and fifteen or something like that. Between county, city and township and that.
Well, it would be an airport team, not, or, yeah, it'd be. Townships, counties and cities are all in our pot.
Yep. And then there's, and then there's the secondary pot that's the airport one. That money pulls into that and that group as well.
Keep what you're thinking out. Take two forty and put it in the covered or over, what, over the budget this year, I mean, extra, what, an extra this year? And then keep the rest in the general? Is that kinda what you're thinking?
That's, that's kinda where I was at, that we could hold even, we still would retain some of those dollars, probably a hundred thousand and change, so if the sheriff's department had any additional expenses, we could spend those on. Uh, you know, whatever comes up, I guess, but it'll sit in the general funds, being the sheriff's department has funded out of the general. So it would just build our general fund copper slightly, but at the same time, we would be passing on the tax. I wouldn't say a break, obviously, but we would be able to hold steady for everybody out there.
Right.
Was my thought, that's just kind of just rambling around in my head the last few minutes.
I like that thought.
I like that thought.
Yeah, no, I hear that either too, given the nature of this year, I think that that makes a lot of sense, it would be, you know, good by taxpayers around the county. Uh, but again, you know, I feel wrong if I didn't say that the only thing that ever scares me about not raising taxes a little. Is we have to raise them a lot a year after, two years after, you know? One, one thing, and I'm not saying that this is happening, you, it's, it would feel like mentioning it, you know, you don't wanna whip us off people's taxation.
What do you think, Lisa?
Well, you know, I'd like to put it on the general fund, but. I don't know. Know what, what does the sheriff lead?
Well, I think he's got everything he needs, but.
Okay.
Yeah, you know, everything's meant for in his budget, so.
Well, at this point, yeah, his budget is funded, he's fully funded with the additional.
And he was thrilled with that.
Yeah, with the additional what?
And then investment change up there, I mean, you know, I was, we were working out about one point nine for interest, and then all it come to and all it got was point three five. So I only re- I renewed the CDs for three months, thinking maybe something would change around by December, January.
It won't. The Fed's gonna keep it at zero for as long as possible because of how unstable the economy is.
Yeah, so we'll start seeing inflationary pressure, you know?
And that would be pretty competitive to the whole thing, because I, I call it too long.
What do we generally earn on all of our CD interest in a year, in a, in a, not, a normal year, not this?
We've been doing a million dollars sitting out a year. So we're getting about eighteen, nineteen thousand, and then that's, um, four million tied up. I assume COVID affected the revenue stream though for this year, that would probably not be effective next year, so to raise taxes, you'd worry, but there was an effect on income. COVID, I wouldn't suggest for some too.
Well, yeah, certainly not, I mean, I, again, I, the only reason I say that is that there have been years, even while I've been a commissioner, where we've had to raise fairly substantially, right? And so one of the things that I think, although it feels nice at the time, i- it's not good budget practice where, okay, we've got a little bit more than we need this year, so let's give it all back. Right, then you come down, and then all of a sudden the next year, it's like, oh, man, our expenses are way back up there, we gotta go up ten percent. Whereas if, if you had just sort of held steady and said, hey, we had a, we had a feast year, we're gonna have a little bit of a nice, you know, savings, right, in, in the accounts. Then you don't have to go up as much, right, you can sort of scale it out. I don't know that that's the case this year, but I do feel it bears mention, you know, again. I, I think, I think that this is a special, I'm absolutely, you know, on that train, I, I think this was a hard year for a lot of people. So, but I just, I felt it would not be right of me not to mention it at all.
It's, and it's a reasonable question. My question is that, Kevin, you know, we're talking, we're, when we initially put the budget together, we were talking the possibility of paving in twenty-two or possibly pushing it to twenty-three, correct? So that project is gonna be, how many miles is that hamden stretch?
I think it's five, I'd almost say it's a curve or it's ten.
So we're probably looking at, let's see, what did we pave this year, fourteen? So about a hundred thousand mile for the overlay cost right now, then probably give or take that. So we're looking at probably about a million dollar project. So we funded out of county road dollars? Is that how we build that revenue stream? The future to build it up? Yes.
Uh, we use it out of the highway. How much less county over? Highway tax.
Well, yeah, we always build highway tax, but we borrowed ahead on the highway tax to get this last portion done, so we're going to have to then accumulate highway tax from twenty-two and twenty-three then, right? Would that be enough to cover that project probably, I mean, what are we accruing in highway tax a year right now?
Uh, it'd probably be three hundred thousand.
Okay, so we're not doing too bad then. I mean, cause if we collect two years worth of highway tax, we'll have six hundred, and then we'll have about a four hundred thousand dollars full, we're gonna have to fill to get that paving done if we push it to twenty-three, which is something we can probably do. Push four hundred thousand, that our no rate now is only, what? Six, what, six mils? Seven, that's up to me. I mean, so we can spread that out over the twenty-two and twenty-three budget and easily just add, you know, three or four mils each year and spread them all over, so we can go without revenue to then get that project. That, that was my concern too, in, in thinking about it, is how do we balance so we don't go up and down and jump back and forth? And we wanna try to keep kinda steady, but at the same time, pass some of those dollars back.
Can we derive a figure other than two forty, somewhere between zero and two forty? Give the taxpayers a break and keep a little more in the general? Hold that road project, just in case. I mean, we were kinda counting on that berry dog money. I think we should keep a little more of it.
That's fine, I don't have a problem with that. I mean, we have time to discern this, we don't have to make a decision tonight, it's just a dis- open discussion for everyone to think about in the next two weeks, bring this to our operating meeting, when we have to finalize the budget, to say, where's that, where do we think we should land at, essentially? But I just wanted to bring it up tonight so everybody had some time to study on it.
And another thing to think about is the feds are trying to find ways to stimulate to calmly through road projects, so they're making fun of it, I mean, we don't know that, but.
Well, yeah, I remember, didn't, uh, is it Brian, correct? I always say. Ryan from MDDOT sent out an email talking about that they wanted to get projects lined up, cause there was the possibility of some dollars coming for infrastructure.
And they haven't come yet, but.
Yeah, but there's a possibility it might happen at some point, so at least something that they're looking at, trying to get. One of those ones where you never, if you had a crystal ball, you'd know exactly what you can do.
Yeah, absolutely.
You never do, all we can try is try to keep stuff as level as we can, and use the most possible. All I know is this, and granted, mills aren't completely equivalent to cost of budget totally, obviously. But since I've been on the commission, obviously our mills have grown in value probably from forty-five thousand till sixty-three dollars, sixty-four almost. But we've gone from a mill rate, I think the first year I was on, we were probably a hundred and thirty, and we're down to ninety now. Now, some of that is obviously caught in the mill rise category, some of it's obviously state taking on social services funding, but I think the taxpayers around Z County, if you look at the traditional dollars. We're actually at a pretty doggone good place comparatively to what we were five and ten, fifteen years ago. Mill rates used to be far higher if you look in the past, so I mean, comparatively speaking, our, 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 our tax structure is not together right now. But it's always nice when you can try to get people, you know, try to keep, you know, we don't need to get any more than we need, obviously. So, further discussion? Questions, comments, um, anything?
Have any discussion or what?
Excuse me, sir?
Oh, no. No worries.
Our office received another thirty eight calls. It was got three years now.
So that goes, that can come off of the budget then?
Because it's. It's called the general or wage something.
Everybody else got coach christianization? At thirty-eight and fourteen, that's already fifty-two, we're moving on. Okay. Further discussion, questions, comments, concerns? Twenty-two dollar budget.
Don't know that we received a whole lot of calls, did we?
I was.
Since the estimates by now this year, yeah.
A couple people commented, so how do we read it? It was a big deal. It was nice.
Well, the, you know, the school held fairly steady, the townships have all held fairly steady, so I mean.
Right, right.
And I think actually my, like, now it's just like five dollars. Okay, one last chance. Okay. Seeing no one else, we will close the hearing on the 2021 budget. Okay, from there, we will move on to Kevin.
Yes, we'll start right off, a discussion on their coaches on. Ramsey four miles up, they, um, met with the water board yesterday, and they're, they want to do a, actually their attorney suggested that they. Do an hydraulic study on that flow through there and see if those larger culverts are oriented or. Or whatever, whatever the study shows, that's what they want. So they have, as far as I know, they've worked up a hydraulic study for that location. And there is, um, there's two twenty-four inch. Tally culverts there that come from the west side to the east side that are adding water to that system, so. Hard to say what their study has been showing.
Long do they need to take these studies?
Month, that's two to three weeks, best case scenario. Well, probably because probably this is probably. You know, we're looking at the third week in October before we're done on chips. I mean, it is possible, we can still get it done that last week in October, November, but. Well, I don't know if the weather can be around here. It may end up being next year for the work. We did, Ryan, uh, Hulk and I did meet out there with, uh, Justin Gross, uh, his dad, Justin's dad. I couldn't remember his name.
Albert.
Albert. And when we were talking, it was kind of a one-sided conversation, and they had contacted, uh. Snyder, the Snyder boys, Steve and. Anyway, and they, they said, go ahead and do this project. Well, they were gonna get both of the waters that's coming down there. As we were out there on the road talking, Bob, the father of the two boys, showed up, and he was really adamant about taking those back out, so. I mean, we heard both sides of the discussion that day, we were out there. Uh, I was looking at, Brian and I looking at the situation. So we had some really good discussion that day out on the road. But in the end, a lot of more decided to do hydraulic study there.
Okay.
So, yeah, we may be looking. So, yeah, we may be looking at next spring or whatever to get those. You know, depending on what the hydraulic study is for.
So, if, if somebody downstream ends up with property damage of some kind, you know, from flow next spring, who, who has liability?
Well, once the hydraulic study is done, if it says that it needs, let's just say, for instance, it needs those extra culverts they put in, then theoretically, they did a gap to any one. On the nature.
But. And Kevin and I were having this discussion before the meeting that those twenty-four inch culverts weren't there when that road was initially designed.
No, not correct.
Right. So, there's, there's extra water coming in that, that probably weren't there initially when that, that road was put in and designed. So, there are a good chance that what was there was inadequate. Um, and that's something that this flow study is gonna let us know. So.
Well, I just, you know, in a case like this, because it's so unusual and I could potentially see temperatures running hot in the spring and, you know, water flow that may or may not be related to any of the stuff that's going on may be a cause of consternation. I just wanna make sure that wanna know, I kind of wanna know what we might be liable for.
Well, I guess in my opinion, I don't.
Fair, but I, I, we didn't do the damage, so we really look held viable. For her. Yeah, exactly. You always get things in the lawsuit, right? But I mean, we would have a leg to stand on there. We didn't approve the work, we didn't do the work. Okay.
Okay. So, there are thoughts?
But the, the risk that we could have is do the work now and then have the flowage study done and am only to determine that we need to do it again.
Oh, no, I'm not, I'm not making the argument that we should go ahead and, you know, front run the water board's findings. I just wanna know if, if it looks like we're gonna be pushed into a freeze, what that might mean in the spring.
Oh, we got a long haul left. Hopefully.
I hope so too.
As come the worst, you can't get them out and the study funds are supposed to be taken out, it's a blower.
We can plug them with dirt.
Or the plugs. I, I, I understand why the water board's doing what they're doing, and I'm not saying I completely disagree with it, but I kind of completely disagree.
Water flows that way, no question.
I, I don't deny that fact, but the whole process is supposed to be that if you thought that you needed additional fall, you speak up, you go say this needs additional fall, you do the study, you get it okay, then you put the culvert in.
Right, absolutely.
You don't go cut the culvert yourself. It's just that simple. And, and, and I, I just struggle with, I understand it, and I'm, I'm, I'll go along with whatever we wanna do, but I'm just frustrated.
I can remember the time of years of knowing county commissioner, group, open district, but they want to open cut one of our county roads, let the waters. And I just, I wasn't aware, but I advised against it just because of the downstream effects of it happened.
We might, we might not like water law. I mean, I understand that, but at the same time, it's still there regardless if we like it or not.
Well, like you said, Kevin, the water board's lawyer suggested this. So, I think we're fine.
No, I agree. I'll, I'll follow their, their recommendation. And I'm just saying that just kind of go backwards.
And just kind of, we actually have to plug the bottom one to get all the water to stop and come down to the last person. That would stay in our ditch, I believe. When they have those culvert, those approaches are open cut, so nothing stopped it at the time when it was raining.
Well, I guess we can wait and see what the water board comes back with on the study, and then we can determine what we're gonna do from there. We have, we have options.
So, I think they're doing the best thing, everything is best for that.
And that's not a good idea as a whole. Okay, any other questions on that?
Okay, and then the guardrails that are supposed to be on the more stopper bridge, I need to ask three different companies to give me quotes, but one of the companies no longer sells them, uh, human science no longer sells them. So, I got one bid from custom contracting solution, uh, Jameson. Do the total project was nineteen thousand, three hundred and twenty-two dollars and twenty-four cents. And just the materials, if we were gonna do it, it was thirteen thousand, twenty-five dollars and twenty-eight cents. And the other bid I got was from Three D Specialties out of Bartle. Their bid was twenty-one thousand, two hundred and thirty-one dollars and thirty-two cents. And just the materials was thirteen thousand, two hundred and forty-one dollars and thirty-two cents. And honestly, I was thinking it was gonna be a whole lot more than that, so I would like to have them do the work since whenever we do other stuff anyway. So, as my suggestion or my recommendation would be to accept custom contracting solutions for a total project of nineteen thousand, three twenty-two, twenty-four.
Maybe do that this fall?
Yep, do it this fall.
Overproof, yeah.
Okay, motion second. Further discussion? Any none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote the same side.
And I need to order a little bit of road wine for our apparel, so we're ready for next spring. It's gonna take about thirty-five hundred gallons, and that's gonna cost eight thousand five hundred, roughly eight thousand five hundred dollars.
We'll do it. Second.
Okay, motion the second, further discussion? Any none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote the same side. Motion carries.
And as a result of our low pass agreements, I found one that they would get signed by the chairman of the auditor, came in late. So, I would like a motion to have the chairman and the auditor sign the Creole Township's low pass.
Move the.
Second.
Okay, motion the second, further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote the same side. Motion carries. Call it out, Billy. Yeah, thanks, Kevin.
I do have one question.
This isn't a good one.
That road Benson County road south of Church's Ferry, when we paid, what, ten thousand dollars to inspect that bridge?
Yeah.
We never, it went underwater. You're gonna have to spend ten thousand dollars again?
No.
Nope. That, that.
Our inspection, underwater inspection is still good.
Okay, because I noticed there's, I don't know, probably thirty feet from the bridge back that's still underwater. And I thought, you know, are we gonna have to add up another ten thousand dollars in the spring to make that really good yet? Okay.
I checked into that.
Okay.
There's a lot of years that come in there.
I suppose, yeah.
But they didn't, they didn't tell me that you got how many years.
Yeah.
I'll say five years. I don't know whether.
From the north coming down, you know, that'd be fine, but from the bridge south, that's where the water is. The bridge itself is out of the water.
The horse, the only thing we're very concerned with is what's going on underneath.
Underneath the bridge, yeah.
West half of the truck road. Oh, yeah, yeah. It's, yeah.
They started hauling it over there?
Yep.
Yeah.
What was I gonna say? I, I.
They didn't fix it back to original status. They just kind of put some gravel in the areas that they uh, squished out, but it needs to, once they're done and complete, which looks to be soon. Um, I'm hoping it's been a long summer of two-lane traffic on the four-lane highway. Um, and that road is, is in really tough shape.
Oh, they're hauling a lot of gravel on there right now.
Um.
Right after the last meeting, I hauled a little bit on it. It wasn't in too bad a shape at that point, but since they started hauling again.
Probably last week, it's really good.
Nothing must be for that D O T section.
I think that's where it is, yeah. Because it's going right across the highway, yeah.
Have you talked to them, Kevin?
Uh, no, they have a, a construction meeting every Tuesday, and I couldn't get there today. So, I haven't talked to them in a week.
I would lie to them today, and I, I got a big idea. They're gonna use it again next year.
I don't think next year, but they did say they were gonna use it this fall, yeah. I think they hope to have that project completed by.
Or they're waiting to see when contracts are, like, or bids are gone, you know, in fact.
But we're pushing the timeline. We're gonna have to get, uh, base line down there. I mean, weather's gonna start turning on them too, so, yeah, I need to stay on top of it.
Yeah, they had a lot of equipment back there. They got the porta potties and everything from back there.
Really? I didn't think there'd be any gravel left.
They're coming up two then, going west on two?
Yeah, I think they're just crossing. I think they're doing over by the D O T building over there. That's, that's where all the gravel is going.
Uh, they're redoing that intersection there right at the D O T.
Yep.
Um, yeah.
Well, I think the turn lanes, that makes sense.
Putting in scale.
Uh, he puts some roofie looking curvy.
Yeah, I was gonna say, yeah. Never designed that. I always thought straight lines are able to do it, but.
Yeah.
How's your outlook? Do you put those, uh, contracts in there?
Yeah. And that's what we're just wondering whether or not it's their work is completed yet. You know, once they're completed, then that road gets turned back to its original shape, and that was the agreement that that we signed up on as a county, so.
There's no state agreement for the soul stop, just a contract that's scheduled again.
We can hold it to it, just, like you said, we run it all the time. We're gonna get it in after we're decent shape before the soul starts to fly here at some point. Okay, further questions? Anything else for Kevin?
Thank you, Kevin.
Very good, Kevin. Okay, we'll move down to unfinished business then. Excuse me. COVID discussion, standing order of COVID discussion. I have nothing to add about COVID discussions today. Um, been watching the numbers, so. Other than that, uh, I saw the governor is starting to move some counties county by county on his scale of severity, so we're still at green, I believe. But Benson is yellow by next door, so it sounded like any county must be having some issues.
Mr. McKay told us today it's only real rates.
Cool.
One out of two hundred.
Yeah, well, our, our total rate, I was actually just looking it up while I was talking, is, uh, let's see here.
Was it a two-point-two percent?
Three-point-seven percent daily positivity in, in Ramsey today on what was reported, and our rolling average, I think, is fourteen on seven day.
I think so.
I think so, that's what I saw today. Because it was eighteen-point-six yesterday, and then it went down to like four percent today.
Good news for the schools, good news for everybody.
Let's hope it stays down.
You bet.
Yeah.
Yeah, it all depends on how much testing you have, or issues with that kind of, these types of, but I have nothing to add, I guess. Any other questions, discussion? Seeing nothing? Property nuisance discussion? We have our state's attorney in the back of the room.
There is not an answer. So, um, right now, I'm hoping it's a free and there's some stuff in there. There is a specific provision that is a penalty provision, which is whether or not it applies to territorial zoning piece. If it did, then they need to be responsible to address the issue. Um, so I'm gonna need your back from Mr. Trainer on whether this stuff are on that. And Mr. Britt, I think, so Creole Township got a copy of their zoning and zoning regulations for twenty dollars.
Yeah, I'm sure you all want to say that, but I'm not.
Um, they indicate they don't feel as irresponsible. Once they get back from this, they're gonna have a much more portal. Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Not reasonable? What's up?
The city ultimately, they have their zoning, um, in town, and then they have their actual territorial zoning. They have general streets powered for a half mile around the city, which their ordinance would apply to their nuisance ordinance. The question, uh, I have from Mr. Trainer, on their extra territorial zoning, there's a penalty provision that's in there. If that is intended to apply to the extra territorial zoning generally, it may be their issue if his interpretation of that is business, then it might be our issue as well. That's what was, um, it's something that certainly could be written into the zoning ordinance system. It's not currently the zoning that we have. It is something that could be written into that. It's also something that if home rule were to pass, that could be looked at generally as a requirement of home and equality. It's turned on the way under health safety mode.
If we had home rule, we could do that. Is that what you said?
Oh, yeah, you do. I think if home rule, there's downsides, and there's to adopt.
Yeah. We'd have ordered.
Because there, if you go into zoning, including zoning regulations, that's for doctors, but it could also work.
Providing that township would adopt the county's zoning.
Correct.
I, I would gather they have one problem that I guess. Certain things.
You're saying if we, if we put it under a zoning court, or our, our, encapsulated it. Now, like, uh, uh, ordinance structure, if you're not home rule, then they don't have to adopt that. That's just a, that's just a standing ordinance on anything outside of any city limits that's not incorporated. Okay. Further questions, discussion? Okay.
Thanks for all the work.
Find out then. We'll find out for next meeting, I guess.
We're getting a direction.
Okay. Uh, new business? I think we accomplished all that. Oh, man. Good stuff. Visitors and delegations. Anybody here speak to, uh, issue? Yes, visitors this week. Oh, it's nice. Okay. You're in. No one? Uh, announcements? Anybody with an announcement? Pretty exciting, man. Okay.
I don't know if you wanna discuss the electronic posting. That's, it's very, it's been a hiatus quite a bit, um, because of, obviously, hunting season, uh, currently going on. But Grand T County, we agreed to be a part of that pilot project that the legislature wanted to study, uh, through the interim. And, uh, I think probably because of our great G I S, now I'm back there. Steve, thank you for all that hard work. Um, but I don't think they had a whole lot of landowners to participate in it. Uh, the deadline for participation signup was the fifteenth of July. Um, so, I think within the three counties, there are seventy-nine landowners and roughly thirty-six thousand acres that were signed up for the electronic posting. And that doesn't exclude you from actually posting your property this year. It just gives outdoorsmen an opportunity to look on their app and their phone to, to see. Um, I did speak with, uh, Director Steinewald, and he would be willing to come up and explain the project a little better at our next meeting if we'd like, or sometime in the future. Um, and he would also, uh, be willing to discuss that A N S wash station, um, proposal that we agreed to jump on board with and pursue with the three other counties, Nelson and Benson County. I know their A N S coordinator is gonna be up at the Lake Access meeting in a week, I believe they're meeting on the twenty-third. Uh, Ben will be up, uh, to discuss that a little more. As they, you know, as we discussed at our last meeting, there's a lot of unanswered questions in their proposal for that A N S wash station, and hopefully we can get some answers. But Mr. Steinewald did say that he would be willing to come up and, and discuss that with the commission if we'd, would like to have that, or he would send a representative as well, so. That, and whatever our convenience to have them up with, probably be willing to make that happen as well.
I think they'd be valuing that specifically about the wash stations. This makes perfect sense to me. You know, the electronic posting seems fairly simple and straightforward, but I would like to hear more about.
It does seem to get discussed at every legislative session from the past, I don't know, six, seven sessions. Um, you know, there's, uh, so this was one way for the legislature to come at and, and study a way to do with. a way to do, do things differently than what we're doing now. Whether or not it's workable or agreeable between sportsmen and landowners, I'm not sure, but, um, at least it's a discussion. But legislature meets in January, so I guess, and they'll have to know something by, by then, or at least have some good idea. I know the, the sportsmen have some sort of survey that they're asked to fill out, who may, if they do use the application, I think there's a, a mobile app and all that kind of stuff, so.
I think it'd be beneficial to have, at some point, to talk about the wash station.
Yeah.
Any questions?
Maybe, maybe then we'll have some, some answers to the questions at Lake Access meeting next week and.
Well, yeah, we'll have some more information on it from.
The commissioner also will, will give us our update on that, so.
We'll, we'll see if, we'll see what, uh, what they're thinking, what they're looking at, I guess, at least to have some idea of where we're going. Something we want to participate in or. Yeah, yeah, so if you want to contact, that'd be fantastic, we'll, we'll come up at some point. Okay, anything else under announcements, discussion? Okay, see nothing, we are adjourned.
Thank you all for coming, I appreciate the input.